I call this meeting to order of the regular meeting of the Uba City City Council. Got some information to read. Governor has declared a state of emergency emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued executive order N dash three, three dash two zero, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in the virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
All right, please rise. We have invocation by our city attorney.
Let us power heads. Our Father, we thank thee for the opportunity we have together here today. We ask thee that thy Spirit will be with us and that thou may be able to provide us with wisdom and guidance to make difficult decisions as they may come up, that we may do so with compassion and love for our community and inspiration from above. We pray in the name of thy son. Amen.
We have the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I'd like to ask Mr. Thomas Burns to lead us in the pledge, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. City attorneys report on closed session items. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Any agenda modifications? Seeing or hearing none, we'll go ahead and approve the agenda. First items, item number one ceremonial present under ceremonial presentations. We're going to have a presentation by our Uba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, and that will be led by their CEO, a good partner with the city of Uba City, Marnie Sanders.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me okay? Thumbs up? Great. I feel like I have a command center here because I have Zoom, so I can see the slides and then you. So there's lots of opportunity for disaster, but we're just gonna forge on ahead. And I want to say thank you so much for having having me here tonight to present on how the chamber's doing. And I want to first start by extending a big thank you to the city of Uba City for your partnership with the chamber. For folks out there listening, you may not know this, but we are housed out of that little John Madden house that is owned by the city. And so we are so very grateful to have that space to conduct our business, and we just absolutely love it. So I want to say thank you. And a quick shout out to Mayor Boomgarden, who was one of our presenters this morning at our Government Affairs Committee. So thank you for giving our community a quick update on where the city's at. So without further ado, I'll have you go to the next slide, and I'm getting feedback. Sorry. Let me turn this down. Okay, I can hardly see, but it looks like the slide did shift. Tonight, I just want to talk a little bit about our COVID response, and then I'll focus on our three core areas of work, and that is education, advocacy, and promotion. And then we'll just take a little look at our financial outlook, how we did last year, and our look ahead in 2021. Okay, next slide, please. I think we're all familiar with this word by now. I know I've used it, we've all used it. I think it can go down on the books as the most used word. I'm sorry, I'm trying. Okay, there we go, I see it. Pivot. We've all had to pivot in some way, shape, or form in our businesses, in our personal lives. We've had to make some shifts. And so I'm going to ask to move to the next slide. And it kind of reminded me of back in the day when this young girl was a basketball honker, and if I could tell her how to pivot, she probably would not have been a bench warmer. And I'm not sure about the hairdo either, but we'll talk about that at another time.
Is that you?
Yes, it is. I know, I've aged a bit.
No, no, no.
That is, that is me, and I was, I was a bench warmer. But I think I could really hold my own now with that pivot motion. So really relating what pivot means in basketball terms, we've got, we've got that fixed point, that fixed position with the one foot, and then we just shift around. And that's what businesses have done, that fixed spot. You can go to the next slide, please. That fixed position, that's the mission of our organization, the vision that we have. And at the chamber, our mission is to support the business community, be the voice for that business community. But we're shifting, we're changing the scope of our work, how we conduct business, how we get information and resources to our members. Next slide, please. And as I said at the beginning, our focuses are on education, advocacy, and promotion. So a little bit about what we've done in the area of education. We are the catalyst for business growth. And what that means is we provide information and services. I'm sorry, excuse me. Still getting feedback. I can't get my other device to mute. Okay. We provide information and services to and resources to our businesses to help them be successful in those businesses. And so this last year, I think we really grew in that area of support. And one way we did that was providing webinars to our business community. Since June, we've held 18 different webinars. They've ranged from how to navigate through that PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, the IDOL, the economic, the economic, the IDOL, let's just go with that, all these acronyms. And Councilman Shaw can relate to all the acronyms, too. So how to navigate through those? Do I apply? How do I apply? Do I get forgiveness with the PPP? All the way to how do I promote myself on social media? A lot of businesses really haven't utilized those tools. How to be your own graphic designer? They've had to slim down on their budgets. So we're giving them those tools and the resources that they need to be successful in their businesses. And then I'll shift over to advocacy. Most of you know that we host Government Affairs Committee meetings every month, and that's an opportunity for our leaders and our business community to come together to discuss the issues and challenges that we all face in our community and an opportunity to find some solutions in there. So when COVID hit, we decided that maybe we needed to convene more often, so we got together on a weekly basis. We called that the Uba Sutter Pulse Meeting. It was, again, just a way to connect our leaders and our business community together so you all could hear from those businesses what was going on and could address and address those issues and those challenges in the best way that we could. And we know it's been very difficult for everyone. Our hands have felt tied in many ways, and we're all in this together. But in any case, we held those meetings. We also are members of the United Chamber Advocacy Network. And essentially what that is, is a, we have a lobbyist that is working on our behalf at the State Capitol. And it's, we're one of six chambers that are part of this group. They're all chambers that are in communities that look a lot like ours. And so I feel like that representation is really solid, and it really makes sense for representing our business community. So and we'll continue that relationship, and it's been very good so far. And then in the area of promotion, most people know chambers are all about the ribbon cuttings and the business after hours and those kinds of events. And those came to a screeching halt when COVID hit. But so again, we had to pivot and figure out a way that we could continue to help promote business, connect people through networking opportunities. So we took some of that online virtually through Zoom, and we've all had more than enough of this Zoom world. But we've done that. We normally host the Taste of Uba Sutter event. We could not do that. Instead, we had the Uba Sutter Eats event, which was a virtual event. We had this beautiful guide created to help promote eating local, you know, picking up takeout. So our community knew what was going on in our restaurant community, where they could pick up a great dish to bring home to the family. So we did that. We also held a campaign called Twinkle Twinkle Little Shop, and again, that was to encourage shop local. We had folks send in receipts where they shopped locally, the small mom and pop shops is what we were looking for. And then we had a, we had a drawing for prizes, and we had a wonderful donor give us the money to purchase these gift cards to give out as prizes. So again, just keep pushing out shop local, eat local. And I really think our community has stepped up. They, they're thinking differently about how they shop and where they eat out, and it's reflected in our community. Can you guys hear that feedback? Have to shut this part off. I'm not going to really be able to see the slide. Okay, sorry about that. All right. Speaking of slides, next slide, please. Okay. Yes, you can't keep a good chamber down, I think. I am so sorry. I knew I was going to have technical difficulties. All right. The chamber really, you know, like a lot of businesses, we, we had some areas of struggle, but we were able to really come out in pretty good shape. So next slide, please. This is just a little snapshot of how we did last year. So we cut our expenses, like a lot of businesses, they had to cut off the fat, and, and that's what we did. And so we were able to reduce our expenses by 16%. But we were also able to increase our revenue by 16%. And that really is a testament to, to the support that we get from our partners like the city of Uba City and our membership base, who were committed to continue to support the chamber, knowing that the work that we do will benefit them. And so we really appreciate that. But we are in really good, solid standing, and I think we have a bright future ahead. I think we all do. I think our community has been incredibly resilient, and, and I'm so proud to be where I am to watch our community as we, as we come out of COVID. Okay, next slide, please. I thought I would give you a little snapshot of what our major revenue sources look like. Obviously, we are a membership organization, so that's primarily going to be our main source of revenue. And you'll see from our fiscal year 2018 and 19, we grew this last year by a little over 10% in our revenues. We hadn't made a decision, we hadn't, we had not increased our annual dues in a number of years. So we made a slight increase to the business, which was pretty minimal for them, but when it's all added up, it was a pretty significant amount for the chamber. And, and it really did help this last year without even knowing. And then our next major source of revenue are the events that we host. And obviously, we were not able to do Taste of Uba Sutter or the Swan Festival. We did get Gala in. That was several weeks before we, we shut down. I think a lot of people remember that being the last party that they attended before the shutdown. So we, I guess we went out with a bang. And we really did, that Gala, we raised $30,000 more than we had in recent years. So it was an amazing success and again, provided us some of that cushion that we needed to, to weather, to weather this storm. And then the other income category, we, we get small grants and donations. There's grants that we received to do our Leadership Uba Sutter program, things of that nature. And then you can see, we did see a pretty good drop in new membership, but I think that makes good sense. It was COVID, and people were slimming down their budgets. They weren't thinking about joining chambers and letting money go out the door at that time. But in the last week and a half, we've gotten six new chamber members. So I, I'm hoping that's a good sign of things to come, and, and the community's feeling, feeling better, they're, they're feeling like we're going to get out of this. And we are. I don't think we thought we'd be here almost an entire year later, but, but here we still are. Okay, and the next slide, please. And then I'll just quickly go over some of our activities that we're, we're getting into this year. Our special initiative, Restaurant Association. So as you all know, restaurants are among the hardest-hit industries during COVID. And, and I've had lots of conversations with our restaurant owners over the course of the last year, and a few of them indicated their desire to have a restaurant association that was more locally based, that could provide a larger voice for them locally. A lot of them belong to California Restaurant Association, which is a wonderful association, but sometimes don't quite represent our smaller communities in the way that our restaurants would like to see. So we have come together, the chamber and a number of restaurant owners. We've invited a few other potential stakeholders to the table to have conversations about how to bring this association to fruition. We would like to see that the Restaurant Association would be under the umbrella of the Chamber of Commerce, and we would provide that membership opportunity to our restaurants. And they would get a unique set of benefits that make the most sense for, for their specific challenges and needs. So I hope to have more report, to report in the coming months regarding that. And then Film Commission. I don't know how many of you have heard about film commissions in communities, but just to give you an idea of what they're all about, they're, they are the organization in your community that attracts productions and films to your community. Now, why would we want to do that? Well, when you bring a production, you bring a film to your community, you are bringing people who are staying in your hotels, eating in your restaurants, and having catering brought on their location sites, they're using our services, and all sorts of different kinds of vendor opportunities there, having an impact on, on our economics here locally. So we're exploring some options there. I've reached out to a number of film commissions. Actually, I just had a meeting with Shasta County Film Commission, and she had said to me about 10 years ago, they didn't have a film commission, and they were tracking economic impact from production, and it was about $100,000 in a year. Now that they have a film commission, and they have a person dedicated to promoting the area to the film industry, they see over a million-dollar economic impact to their community by having, having those productions come to town. So again, something that we're exploring, we're in conversation with, with partners and potential stakeholders with that. And then workforce development. I do need to give a shout out to Jackie Silman. She actually pulled a group of, I don't know, a couple dozen people together on Zoom from the education sector, from the business sector in the chamber, to start a conversation on how we can connect the dots between education and a skilled workforce and connecting that skilled workforce to our business. Those kinds of conversations have just begun, but I'm really excited that the chamber's at the table, and I'm hopeful that we'll have much more to report on that. And then I know I'm taking up a lot of time. You guys have some exciting things on your agenda this evening, so I'm looking forward to hearing about that. Membership development. We're going to host a membership drive in May. I think now's the time. We haven't done it in a long time. But not only do we want to increase our membership base, we want to educate the public on what a chamber is about, that we're not just the ribbon cuttings and the networking events. We're much more than that. So I think that'll be a great opportunity, hopefully, to create some buzz around the chamber. And then just our other events and program areas. Of course, we'll continue to bring the webinars. We appreciate our, our membership with United Chamber Advocacy Network, and we'll continue that. Leadership Uba Sutter got off to a great start in 2019, came to a screeching halt with COVID. So they'll be finishing their class, hopefully, this spring, and we'll be bringing a new class on in the fall, if all goes well. But when COVID hit, they pivoted, too. They jumped right in, and they got involved in getting food out to people in need. So they've really done a fantastic job, and we just love that program. And hopefully, we truly are creating leaders for the future here in Uba Sutter. And then Gala, June 11th. We've moved it. It's happening. I just know it. So hopefully, we'll keep you posted on that. Fingers crossed. And then we still have plans to do Taste of Uba Sutter in the fall, also Swan Festival. And then just to get back to life and get out there and shake hands and give hugs at our, our networking events. And we all miss that human connection so much, and, and so we're very much looking forward to that. And the last slide, I just want to say thank you so much, council, for allowing me to be here tonight, and, and thank you again for your partnership. And that's it for me, unless you have any questions. And I'm sorry for my technical difficulties. I put my iPad on the ground, and I can still hear the feedback, and I'm kicking it, trying to present. Yeah.
We saw you trying to kick it. Wade or Grace, any comments, questions for Marnie?
Oh, I'm, I'm excited that you're doing the Gala on June.
Yes, yes. I think maybe that will be, it was our party going out, and it'll be our party coming back in. This is, this is what I'm really hoping for. And you know what? It will be the perfect opportunity to celebrate the resiliency of our businesses and highlight some of the, some of those businesses that really have stepped up and the community that's stepped up. So it will be the celebration of all celebrations, if we can pull this off.
Marnie, tenemently, where's it going to be at?
At Hard Rock Hotel and Casino. Yeah. I'm still trying to get the volume off on my iPad.
Marnie, I have to say that with all the struggles of everything, I think you just gave the best example how in, in, you can keep moving forward in the most, you know, distracting ways, and you did so well in your presentation. Thank you, I really, I really.
Thank you. Yeah, I tried to roll through it, but. I really wanted to be there in person, I'm sorry. It, yeah. Thank you.
But I think the work that, where the direction that you're having the chamber move is really, it's refreshing, it's great to see how you're, just even within COVID, you've made some extremely, not extremely, but moved in the direction of education, advocacy, and promotion. I, I look forward to seeing once, you know, we do all this work in person again, to expand the membership as you've been doing. And I'm, I'm just amazed with how much you and the chamber's been able to do. So thank you for presenting to us. I really appreciate that.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
Yeah, Marnie, thank you very much for the presentation. I know we've met before regarding the Film Commission opportunity, and I continue to agree with you that that's an outstanding opportunity for the city and the entire community just waiting to be had. So if there's anything that the city, or even me specifically, on behalf of the city or even as a private person can do to assist, please consider me a resource, and I look forward to more conversations. It's a great idea.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and more information will come, and we'll be happy to come and share with you if you would like.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marnie, thanks for everything you've done this past year. I know we've worked a lot on the, all the acronyms and the webinars and stuff for our businesses, and I, you guys have done a great job. I appreciate everything you've done to try to keep the, our local businesses going. The only question I have for you is concerning our legislative advocate for the chamber. Which firm are we using out of Sacramento? Do you know off the top of your head?
It is actually, it's the Advocacy Management Group is the organization that runs the United Chamber Advocacy Network. And David Butler is the executive director of the organization, United Chamber Advocacy Network.
So is he our, is he our lobbyist, then?
He is our lobbyist, yes. He is our representative.
Okay, thank you.
Marnie, thank you for coming and, well, not coming, but showing up and presenting. You defined pivoting as you were trying to kick your, your iPad or whatever was on the floor. But first, again, yeah, thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of Uba City this morning. The Zoom was well attended. I think we got some good information out about what, where the city was headed and just, you know, the opportunity to let people know there are, even though we're dealing with COVID, we are moving ahead, and our city staff has done a phenomenal job in securing grants and doing other things, which is what we're sharing. You know, you, the vibe coming out of the chamber has certainly evolved over the years, and I mean that in a very positive way. I think I can speak on behalf of the council, certainly for myself. We value the partnership and look forward to an even deeper relationship as we move forward in the coming years. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Boomgarden. I appreciate that.
All right.
Well, you all made that easy.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to, thank you again, Marnie. We're going to go ahead and move to item number two, which is COVID-19. It's a discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. The presentation's going to be by Brad McIntyre, our Community Services Director. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm glad Marnie used basketball as, to start off her presentation. By the way, I coached her, so, you know, it really wasn't, I am that old. It really, it was a defensive issue, okay? She didn't play much defense, but I hope she's still on. I'm here this evening to just give you a quick update as it relates to COVID-19. Currently, we are in the purple tier, the widespread. Both counties continue to stay there, but, you know, I think there is a feeling that we are moving in the right direction. For our recreation staff, because we are in the purple tier, we are now going to start offering two different programs for our youth, PE in the parks and soccer skills and drills. Both of these programs are for children ages seven to 12. Both of them will be located at Blackburn Tally. And then in addition, we are starting a distant camp learning being located at the senior center. Now, the first thing I always want to reiterate when we use, utilize the senior center is that because we are in the purple tier, we are not able to provide any services to our seniors. But once we go down, hopefully soon to the red tier, we'll be, be able to offer the senior center back to that particular group of individuals. The distant learning camp starts next week, as I mentioned, at the senior center. It is for first graders through sixth graders. The highlights of the camp are pretty much that staff will be able to help students with their distant learning, but not do the work for them, provide indoor and outdoor activities, and we'll be able to utilize Kingwood Park, which is right down the road. Our park staff, at the request and direction of council, but from the request of Uba City Unified, to begin opening up Gauchea Aquatic Park to get some type of normalcy for our students so that River Valley High School and Uba City High School can participate in swim practice, and then eventually some type of swim competition. It will take us about two to three weeks to. Uh, it will take us about two to three weeks to heat the pool. Uh, our parks, our park staff is working hard to prepare the facility as well. With all of our programs, programs, uh, it is imperative to understand that we will be adhering to the COVID rules, uh, processes that we have done as we have worked ourselves up and down the tier. Um, pending, uh, the hiring of part-time staff, uh, we are hoping to continue with, uh, additional programming coming in the near future. Speaking of part-time staff, uh, if anyone is interested out there, we are looking for enthusiastic individuals that are interested in working in our youth sport programs, our camps, adult sports, and certainly at Gauchea Aquatic Park. And if anybody's watching this, uh, or if the parents are, you can certainly call 822-4650 to get additional information, or you can go to ubacity.net. That's a little plug. Can I, uh, answer any questions at this time?
Councilman Kirchner or Councilwoman Espendola?
Uh, Brad, not a question, but just a comment. It's, uh, it's, it's exciting to hear that we're gonna at least, uh, partly open up the gap and, uh, were we, were we gonna move forward the Feather River Parkway as well?
Yeah, so in addition to the district asking to utilize Gauchea Aquatic Park, um, they also asked to use Feather River Parkway for their cross-country team, um, and we, we are doing that as well.
Well, thank you for that. And this is, this is huge, especially for those, those kids that, uh, want, they want to return to some, some type of normalcy. And so, um, thank you for, for doing this.
All right. Brad, uh, thanks. It's great to see that incrementally we're opening, doing so safely in, in accordance, but getting back to, to getting our kids active and, and engaging, I think it's great. So I appreciate the presentation and, uh, look forward to more openings as, uh, the days go by. Thanks.
Likewise. Thank you.
Item three, public communication, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with the Public Health Guidelines for Social Distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber and in the Sutter Room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the Sutter Room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. I do know that I have one speaker card, uh, but before we get to that, do we have any comments from the public, Sierra?
No public comment.
Okay. I do have a speaker card from, uh, Mr. Manny Cardoza.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a county issue, but I'm hoping the city can assist in this for the support of, uh, for the citizens of Uba City. As you read in the paper this morning, they had their first vaccinations this weekend. Uh, midweek last week, they had signups. They had over a thousand people sign up within a couple of hours. And in the paper this morning, uh, they only administered 954 shots. So that means they threw away 46 shots. And they said they had a waiting list and, uh, I was thinking if you could, uh, you talked to Dr. Lou quite a bit, if you could mention to her that if there's a waiting list, instead of wasting these vaccinations, if they could start calling people and get them there so we can get rid of all these shots, because if you just average 45 people a week, uh, in 10 weeks, that's 450 people that doesn't get the shot. And I know there's people out there that want to get the shot. So after you just, I'm just asking the help of the council if you can pass this to Dr. Lou. And I know it's a county issue, but I don't want to wait another week and go to the county supervisor's meeting, but I'm gonna still go see them also and make the comment. But if you can help me before that, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions I'll be able to answer or anything like that?
Questions or comments for Mr. Cardoza?
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Um, Ms. Langley and I, uh, attend a weekly meeting with Dr. Lou. We'll follow up and, and see if we can learn a little bit more about what may have happened out there and, and convey the thought. Any other public comments? Mr. Burns, please. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Uh, you can consider one of those vaccines and put in the trash, mine. So I don't want one. But I wanted to talk about, um, the Fifth Street Bridge. And I'm driving by there usually every day and I saw it all graffitied up. I don't know if you guys are aware of that. But, uh, they graffitied all underneath the underpass and then, uh, when I was coming off the bridge the other day, they graffitied all, or someone graffitied all down the, um, the wall that has the buttes on it. And, uh, but I'm not sure. When I glanced over there today, I thought maybe that, uh, that was removed. But, um, I'm just curious if, uh, you're aware of that and what's, what's being done, man? Because I, I sure hate to see that taking place and it really irritated me to see that. So.
It looks like we may have a response from Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you. Yes, uh, we, uh, were aware of it and our park staff, uh, one of the many things our park staff does is they do graffiti removal. Um, and so they started on it, I believe Monday, uh, and finished it today as well, as I look at Matt Langley, our manager. So yeah, so we were aware of it. Um, and certainly we still want to encourage people to use the YC 311 to let us know, because, uh, certainly we, we know about the bridge, but any other graffiti as well.
Good, good to hear that we were on it. Um, we'll, we'll stay, we'll stay vigilant and as, uh, Mr. McIntyre mentioned, if you see something, you'll let us know. Um, they're nodding their heads back there, so yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead. Through the mayor. Uh, first of all, Mr. Burns liked the beard. Just wanted to tell you that. But, uh, Mr. McIntyre, my question was for you and I may be completely off-base on this one, but I had heard when we originally built the bridge, that there was something that could be put on concrete that would prevent graffiti. And is that something that we could research and look? Because the kids are just gonna keep tagging it day after day, year after year, but if there's a way that we could actually prevent it, does such a animal exist out there?
There is, um, as it relates specifically to the bridge, I can certainly make up an answer, but I don't have it. I'll look to Ms. Langley as far as the engineer of that. But, but to answer, so we do use, uh, some, uh, solution, uh, within our parks that helps minimize it, but it doesn't, it, it, it's just easier to paint over the graffiti part, to answer. So, so there is no magic wand to that.
Okay. So there's nothing we can treat the concrete with, just?
Not that I'm aware of.
There is a product that you can apply that makes it easier to clean off.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we did not put that on the bridge, do I?
Um, I would have to check with Kevin Bradford to see if we did apply that. But that is something, a treatment that we do put on concrete structures that are tagged often.
Okay. Just, it was just a, a comment or a question that we might look at till we're done. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. McIntyre.
So just a follow-up to Mr. Burns also, that we are going to, have been looking at that. We know the people that tagged it are very similar to ones that have done the sign in the past and we're gonna see what we can do about preventive measures down there as well. We've just gotta find electricity and stuff.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
No public comment.
Okay. All right. We're gonna go ahead and move to the consent account, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council, staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on any of these items? If so, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'm seeing none. Consider a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Through the mayor? Move to approve the consent calendar, items four, five, six and seven.
Second.
All right. I have a, a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by Councilperson Espendola to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that consent colors, consent calendar is approved unanimously. We will now move to item number eight, um, under business items, the Hooper Ranch Estates Subdivision Map, Phase One. This is final map approval. This will be presented by Ben Moody, our Development Services Director.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the item before you is in regards to the first phase of the final map for the Hooper Ranch Estate subdivision. And so the, um, the, the location in question is a 6.66 acre site that is north of Highway 20, along Hooper Road, just west, on the west side of Hooper Road between Jefferson and Monroe. So, um, you can see it in the yellow box presented there. Um, zoomed in here with the aerial, it's a, an existing church facility that's surrounded by relatively flat land. Um, that looks like it's been occasionally used for, for hay or for some different, um, weed of maintenance, but it's basically been a vacant piece of, vacant piece of land that was developed in the county as a church. So I give you a, a general plan screenshot of the surrounding uses. Basically, through the general plan, that area's been designated as low-density residential. And so, um, what's proposed with the tentative subdivision map is to turn this into 21 residential lots and, um, a two-acre plus to, to go around the church. And so what we have going on with this subdivision, so back in August, this subdivision, tentative subdivision map went to the planning commission for approval. And with that, they phased it. And so the phasing is shown here. You have, you have these dashed lines around here. You have Phase One and then you have Phase Two being the residential lots. What this really does is it sets, Phase One sets it up for financing. And so it separates the church from the remainder of the property. Then they're able to sell the remainder to a developer and the developer comes in, will come back to the city with a subdivision agreement and another Phase Two final map that will then split that remainder parcel into the subdivision, into the smaller subdivided lots for residential and then dedicate that road right-of-way. And so with this one, step one, um, it's pretty straightforward. With it, they'll dedicate the, the right-of-way along Hooper Road for the ultimate right-of-way, but the improvements will come with the future phase for the subdivision of two. So this is just a close-up of the final map, a page of the final map product that actually gets recorded at the Recorder's Office that, that will create that Lot One and the remainder portion. So here's a quick process. Um, I got on the bullets, so tentative subdivision map, so back in August, the tentative subdivision map was approved with conditions of approval. With the final map submitted, we, staff reviews the, the final map application, make sure it's, um, consistent with the tentative map and with the conditions of approval. And then with it being a subdivision, we bring it to city council for approval of the map, the findings, acceptance of those dedications and authorized recordation. And then with that, the next step would be actually going to the Recorder's Office and having it recorded. So with this, I'm recommending that council adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Uba City approving the Hooper Ranch Estates Phase One final map and accepting dedications right-of-way and utility easements, easements shown thereon. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
We have a develop, through the mayor, if I may?
Please.
Do we have a developer lined up?
So my, my understanding is that there's a developer, um, River, uh, excuse me, Riverton? River? River Edge? They're out of Sacramento area and they're working with a local design firm to, to do the improvement plans. But at this time, it's still, my understanding is still optioned and so it has, the, the deal hasn't been, um, finalized yet.
Thank you. Councilman Kirchner, Councilwoman Espendola?
Thank you for that presentation, Ben. I, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Not hearing anything. Okay, so I've been advised, and rightfully so, thank you from the city attorney, that because we have two members on teams, we need to, um, vote on this via a roll call, but first we'll need a motion.
I will move to approve?
Second. Through the mayor, before taking a vote, I'm sorry, would you?
Oh.
Any public comment?
You threw a curveball at me. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we had a motion by Councilman Harris and a second by? The Vice Mayor. Okay. By the Vice Mayor. I couldn't remember, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Espendola?
I believe she had to step away for a moment.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
And Mayor Boom Garden?
Yes. The motion passes for zero. Uh, thank you, Mr. Moody.
Thank you.
Moving to item number nine, Landscape Maintenance Services Contract, RFP 21-01, presented by our Finance Director, Spencer Morrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I am bringing formal bid 21-01 to award a contract for landscape maintenance services. Uh, we are joined tonight by, uh, we have a few people in the audience. We have, uh, Dan Stensel, thank you for being here, and crew. And we have, uh, Parks and Ground Superintendent Matt Langley, should you have any operational questions? And Director Brad McIntyre is also available. I also want to recognize the efforts of Accountant Kevin Rivera on my team for putting together this, uh, formal bid. This was the, the largest of his, uh, formal bid experience, so, uh, he did a great job. City does count contract for routine landscaping, uh, maintenance services for 88 locations throughout the city. Locations include walkways, bike paths, landscape maintenance districts, medians and select city facilities. Finance staff informed 28 known landscape contractors of the request for proposal and mandatory pre-bid meeting. Uh, two legal notices were also placed in the Appeal Democrat. City intends to award the landscape maintenance contract to the highest-scoring contractor. The initial term of the contract will be for one year with the option of five one-year extensions at the city's request. Five contractors attended the mandatory meeting and four proposals were received. Four city staff, uh, members evaluated the contractor's proposals in three phases, uh, compliance with the RFP and experience and capability of the contractor, reference checks and site reviews, and cost were used in the scoring. As you can see in the final scoring, uh, ranked one was Landscapes by Stensel of Live Oak, California, followed closely, uh, by score not so closely, but next closest was Vargas Landscapes of Sutter, California. Based on the scoring results, staff recommends awarding the landscape maintenance contract to Landscapes by Stensel of Live Oak, California, in the amount of $350,568 for one year. The contract includes the option of five one-year extensions as approved by the city manager. May I entertain any questions?
Councilman Kirchner or Councilwoman Espendola? Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Spencer, I have a, a question in the, the gap between Vargas and Landscapes by Stensel. And even though Vargas was much less expensive, what were the concerns between the two? And the ranking of it?
So, uh, in the, in the scoring, Landscapes by Stensel did much better from the panel in the technical aspect, so responsiveness to the bid, uh, this bid specifications, uh, in general were, was the, probably the biggest, uh, gap between the two. And they were close enough in price that by the time we, when we, we factored in the cost, it didn't give, it didn't give Vargas, uh, a very large advantage.
I see. Is there any way to reduce the cost through Stensel at all, if, if that's a conversation?
No, Councilwoman.
How do we, how do we know when, um, Stensel employees are, um, following standard work requirements? Do, do they do like, through the HR, do they check for background or drug test? Or how do they keep track of their employees when they're working for, on city properties?
We have Mr. Stensel in the audience, if we'd like to bring him up and ask him that question?
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I don't do drug testing, to be honest with you, but we do, I, I'm very particular about who I hire, mostly it's family and friends, people from my church. And if, if it's anybody outside of that, I, you know, I interview them and check their driver's license records and things like that. But I haven't gone into drug testing just because I feel like I like to have that trust between people I hire. And I feel like if I do that, then they're going to feel like I don't trust them. And so that's kind of how I feel, and that's kind of, you know, I've, I've got the best crew I've ever had. I've got some guys that've worked for me for over 10 years. I've got one guy that's worked for me for 15 years, one of my lead workers. And to me, they're family, you know, they feel like family to me, a lot of my employees. So I want to have that trust with them. So. Any other questions? It's kind of just telling you honestly how I feel.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I can't see you. I wish I could see you camera-wise, but I apologize that we're in this circumstance. I was just curious to know how, how you also know how well your employees are doing the work when they're out at different locations in the city.
Well, I, I check up on them, believe me. I put a lot of miles on my truck checking on their work and, and, and you can ask my daughter, she works for me, she's sitting here, and I, I chew them out sometimes. Sometimes they probably, I've, I've been told I'm a tyrant, but the job's got to get done, so.
All right. I'm not asking the questions that I haven't been asked by other community members, so I appreciate your.
Well, that's, that's why I'm here, because if there's questions, I want to answer them, for sure. This, this contract means a lot to me, and, and the city leaves, means a lot to me, and this is really important, so.
Well, I appreciate your, the, the, being open and honest and willing to answer the questions that sometimes feel uncomfortable, but I think it's better just to be open about it and have the conversation in a public setting like this.
Sure. No, that's great.
I thank you so much for, for doing the work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, Councilmember Esmondola, in addition to everything that Mr. Stensel just said, part of the job description that we have for our parks manager is to continually evaluate the landscape maintenance districts on a weekly basis. So like any good, like any contract, the contract is only as good as, as we manage that contract and hold our contractors accountable. So I just wanted to make sure you understood that those LMDs are being evaluated on a weekly basis as well from my staff.
Thank you, Brad. I really appreciate that additional piece of information.
Spencer, would it be possible to have Mr. Langley come to the podium?
Absolutely. Mr. Langley would be pleased to come to the podium.
Whichever one you like. I'm assuming you're the person that's, that's, you know, evaluating Mr. Stensel's work, and I know Mr. Stensel's probably been with the city for a while now. Do we have any issues with their work at all?
Occasionally, a few minor issues, but, you know, everybody has to hire new employees, and sometimes they think they can get away with stuff, but they can't.
Okay. So you have no, as the, as the, as the chief evaluator of the services, you're satisfied with the work that Mr. Stensel and his crew has done?
Yep, very happy.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any questions for, for Mr. Langley? Okay. Bring it to the council for any other questions? Yes. Sean?
I have no questions. Okay. Through the mayor. Mr. Stensel, thank you for being here tonight. I just wanted to kind of bring this back around, I got a couple of questions, but, you know, we have to remember as a council, we're not the employer. We utilize, you know, Mr. Langley and such to do the, the supervision and would never want to get into your business, Mr. Stensel, and tell you how to manage your employees, because that's not our role. The question that I have gets back to actually a maintenance issue, and we've covered this once before. I come down Stabler Lane daily, and at one point, there was a question of who took care of the sucker vines on the crepe myrtles and different things up and that. Is that a Parks and Maintenance, or is that under yours, Mr. Stensel? Okay, because I know it got resolved, I'm just, figured I'd take the opportunity to figure out who was doing, okay. I appreciate you guys doing it, and the areas you guys service is, it looks really good, so thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Stensel, thank you. I, I know you've been doing work for the city, and we appreciate the, the work. And as Mr. Langley says, obviously, there's going to be occasions where new people are in and all that stuff. I think we all, all have experienced that. So with that, and thank you for being here tonight, too, and answering the questions. With that, I entertain a motion.
Through the mayor. I move to award a contract to Landscapes by Stensel of Live Oak in the amount of $350,568, $350,568, for one year for landscape maintenance services of landscape, landscape maintenance districts, landscape islands, and selected city facilities with the option of five one-year extensions and authorize the city manager to approve the extensions.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by Councilman Harris. May I have a roll call, please?
Through the mayor.
Oh.
So sorry, again, just an opportunity for public.
My left-hand man just told me. Do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Thank you. Oh, we do.
So I, I was looking over this before I sat down and already made in my mind, I mean, excuse me, as I sat down, that I wanted to comment on this number nine. And I didn't realize that the owner was here, I don't know him. But every time I see their crew around town, and my wife also with me, we comment on how great a job they're doing. So I think they're doing an excellent job, and I never see his crew standing around. As an employer, that is rare, okay? And drug testing, we don't do it either. In this day and age, you might not have any employees out there, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Okay. I've asked for public comment, we've received it, we don't have any additional. We have a motion and a second, and so now we will take our roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Stensel. Look forward to our continued partnership. Okay, item number 10, city sponsorship requests. This will be presented by Sierra Wakefield, our city clerk administrator. And I promise to ask for public comment on this one.
I have the privilege this evening to present to you the current sponsorship requests. As you know, our community sponsorship policy requires, hold on, requires that all requests be approved by city council in a public meeting. And so since we're all here, I decided to present to you the two requests that have been submitted. The first, from Beal Military Liaison Council, in the amount of $2,500, and the second from Yuba Sutter Arts Council, in the amount of $2,500. For your reference, these are the available funds that are in the accounts that were budgeted for potential sponsorships. And so with that, if you don't have any questions, I will turn it over to you for review and consideration.
Thank you, Sierra. Councilman Kirchner, Councilwoman Esmondola?
I'd like to say something briefly. Thank you for that, Sierra. The BMLC is very near and dear to, to myself and my family. We were introduced to the organization four years ago, and the relationships that you make as honorary commander continue long after your, the people you're involved with leave Beal. And so there is a real value and importance to this organization, and I'm, I'm glad that we're considering sponsoring them as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
No, no comment.
Okay. Gentlemen? Any comments, Sean?
Other, no, I don't know what has been said before me, but of course, I've read the staff report, and definitely in favor of offering some support to these both very good organizations who contribute a great deal to our community.
Through the mayor, just echo that. Both these organizations are vital to the community, and I think he's a reasonable request, so.
My only comments are, we began accepting these requests, and then had to take a timeout for COVID, along with other timeouts we took on certain financial matters. So these requests have been out there for a bit, and I know that the, the two agencies that we're considering this evening have both, have been very patient in awaiting us to take this item up, so I appreciate their patience. This is the first of the new process of, of having the full council take a look at community contributions, if you will. And I think it, it bodes well for the future as we look at, you know, a finite amount of dollars to spend and making sure we're going to those organizations that truly give back directly to the City of Yuba City. And to, importantly, for Beal, of course, and for the arts, both of those organizations have demonstrated over the years of their value to our residents. So with that, do we have any public comment? Promised you I'd remember.
No public comment.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion on item number 10.
Through the mayor, I move to approve.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilman Harris, a second by the Vice Mayor Shaw on item number 10. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Yes, and those requests are passed unanimously. Thank you, Sierra, for the report as well. Okay, item 11, city manager's employment agreement. I'll take a few moments and discuss the appointment of our, our city manager, which has been a long process for the city and for them. It started with the hiring of a recruitment firm, MRG. Don Bowwinkle, Sherry Concolino were the, the two individuals that were responsible for engaging with us on this recruitment, this executive recruitment. They were screened as a, as a group and approved by the council. They began the recruitment process. We ended up with 113 applicants for the city manager, which is a, a very robust applicant pool. That was pared down by MRG through their review process down to about 40. At that point, an ad hoc committee of myself and the Vice Mayor began screening applications. We narrowed the list down, presented that to the full council, and from that list came away with four finalists, if you will. From the, the four finalists, we, as I've mentioned in previous releases, put them through a very extensive review process, which included, of course, the screening by the MRG, screening of the applications by the ad hoc committee, the interviews by a peer group of, of county administrators and city managers outside and in, in the area, a community panel made up of the different leaders that we felt represented the sectors of our economy here in Yuba City, and of course, our department heads who are obviously very, very involved with, with the activities and the service provided by the city. We also employed the use of a panel of past mayors, just to get an additional set of eyes. The city contracts with a gentleman by the name of Juan Lopez, who does organizational dynamics, and we had him also vet out these candidates. And at the end, the full council had the opportunity to interview the candidates. From that process, the selection that we're recommending tonight for consideration by the council is William Dave Vaughn. William Dave Vaughn, or we'll be calling him Dave, as he likes to be referred to, comes to us from Southern California, however, his roots are extremely deep throughout the Yuba City and, and the region. He has served on numerous boards in leadership positions. He brings a, a demonstrated leadership, professional leadership, has the ability to communicate and collaborate, not only with the folks he works with and lead them, but also with other groups that he would be interacting with. We feel that this is the best choice for the city from the applicants we received. And at this point, I'd like to go ahead and do two things. Number one is ask for comments from the ad hoc committee that began the process with Vice Mayor Shaw, but I also need to also bring the, the city attorney up, but after Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You summed it up quite well, and I would just like to thank you for your leadership during this with the ad hoc committee, and all of the 21 different people that served on those panels that these candidates went through, because each of those cared enough about our city to give up a day of their time and came in with an open mind and gave us very candid feedback. I appreciate the, the trust and the support from the fellow council members, because we had to operate very efficiently and nimbly as an ad hoc committee and to get through the process, or we would have been six months down the line trying to do this instead of a little over three. It really was an amazing process when you go through this with 26, including the council, different people, that all came to the same conclusions that, that we did through this process, and that was what was the best fit for Yuba City and what we needed in the future. And I know our recruitment firm talked about, they were impressed with the process, and they looked at us many times and said, are you guys sure you can do this? And the mayor and myself's like, well, get it done. That means, you know, another couple of days of he and I meeting and moving things forward and, and, and meeting their timelines. So again, thank you for the fellow council members for your trust and for being a part of this, and I look forward to us as a council collectively making this decision together. So thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this has been a, quite an extensive process that the city has been going through. Our office has also gone through an extensive process as part of our component of this. We do have one minor remaining item that needs to be addressed. We think it's a minor issue, so if the council is inclined to approve, we would recommend that the, the approval of the agreement this evening be contingent upon the city attorney's confirmation that that minor issue is addressed. And if it is, you, that'll be confirmed by my signature on the resolution that's attached to your staff report this evening.
Thank you for that. At this point, before we go ahead and entertain any motions, just any other comments from any of the council?
Through the mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just wanted to take a couple of minutes, couple seconds to thank everybody who you already mentioned, including the both of you, staff, all the citizens who came forward to help us out with this very, very important decision. I know it took a lot of time, no one, and everyone took it quite seriously, and it's... I know it took a lot of time, and everyone took it quite seriously, and it's very encouraging to see that process. We've received many comments, and we'll probably receive many more of how thorough thoroughly the process was, and definitely will, looking forward to congratulating and working with Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Please.
I would like to express my appreciation for the hard work that the ad hoc committee took on with all of this. This must have been an enormous amount of work, so thank you for that. I got in at the very end of this, see, you folks did all the hard work, but I respect the process and I look forward to working with our new city manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work. The ad hoc committee did tremendous amount of labor in bringing the people to the table, and I, short towards the end, Councilman Kirchner and I assisted with the hiring process of closing, as you would say, closing the deal. And so we all contributed in the process. It was quite thorough. I would like to thank MRG and our city attorney and also our deputy city attorney Pam Lee for negotiating the final contract, and Shannon, our city attorney as well. And in all of this, I do want to say a special thank you to our executive team, because they also gave a lot of time, energy, and placing or helping us make this decision. And I welcome Dave Vaughn, a familiar face, and I look forward to seeing what the future brings us together. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No public comment here.
Mr. Burns?
Well, I sure wish more of the public was here, but so on the public's behalf, from my perspective, I can see that there was a lot of work done, and I appreciate that. And it's been quite a whittling down. So, and I'm not surprised that the pool of people was so large, because it looks to be a pretty lucrative job. And from the private sector perspective, I mean, it's one handsome salary, okay? So I'm just saying that I believe the man, or whoever would have had that job, needs to hit the ground running and earn their keep, because he is extremely well-paid. So that's what I believe.
We'll make him earn his pay. Okay, entertain a motion in concert with the recommendation from the city attorney.
Yes, sir. With that in mind, I would recommend we moved, I would move to approve the contract with Mr. Vaughn contingent on the aforementioned stipulations.
I would second.
Okay. Would that also include the adjustment and the resolutions for the salary adjustment?
Yes, sir.
A and B.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I have a motion by Councilman Shaw, excuse me, a motion by Councilman Harris, a second by Vice Mayor Shaw. I have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Escondola?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Mayor Boomgarn?
Yes. All right. I'm gonna take a few moments. I wish Matt had stayed here, and you know, she hates this, but now you can officially start counting the days, Diana. But, and I'll send something special to Matt, because I know this was a lot of work for you over the second go around, and we all know that there's been a lot thrown at you, and we probably cannot say thank you enough, and we'll probably continue to say thank you, and, but we also want to acknowledge Matt, because I'm sure a lot of what happens with you and your job affected you and your daughter as well. So appreciate, appreciate everything you've done for us very much, and like I said, I'm sure that we'll be saying more about that over the next few days. Mr. Vaughn is scheduled to begin work on February 22nd, and when he does, we will have a pretty robust onboarding program for him to make sure that he does hit the ground on a sprint. And having the connections he has in the community and his familiarity with the City of Yuba City and the region, I think that's a huge, huge advantage for not only him, but for us as well. And I do want to follow up. Councilwoman Escondola did mention it, and I failed to. Our city attorney and Pam Lee from his office and others also participated in the process in getting the deal done, as did Councilman Kirchner and Councilwoman Escondola in the contract negotiation. So appreciate you two for the work you did in bringing the deal to us today. All right. Future agenda items, item number 12. This is the opportunity to discuss with the interim city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any comments related to the agenda items that may have come in during the meeting also?
No public comment.
Okay. Anything from the council on future agenda items? Not seeing or hearing any. Okay, following reports, we're on reports and communications. Following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. We will start with tonight's city council reports with Councilmember Escondola.
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be the first, because then I get the most of attention from my colleagues, I think. If not, well, the community will listen. I really, I'm truly happy about the assignments with the new committees. I'm assigned to the Bye County Homeless, JPA, the Yuba City Sutter County Homeless Advisory Ad Hoc Committee. Those are two committees that go hand in hand. We have had no meetings since the last two weeks. The next is a new committee that I'm on, Feather River Air Quality Management District. This committee meets every other month. The North Sack Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group. No meetings have been held as of yet. The Regional Water Authority, I have a meeting the following week, or I think in two weeks. And Sutter Flood Control, I have a meeting the following week. I'm the alternate with the Local Agency Formation District, the Countywide RDA Oversight Board, and the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. I have no state committee reporting at this moment, but I did participate in a local community event, which I was really happy to have been invited by a few of the board of trustees through Yuba College. Yuba College Community College had a strategic planning meeting that they hosted and have done this regionally throughout the whole district. What they're looking at is what are Yuba College's weaknesses and opportunities? And I think this ties closely to what Marty was saying earlier about the workforce. We had a long conversation about the community workforce. Some of the local opportunities that potentially may be identified is an expansion of a four-year degree program in the areas of regional nurse or teaching. Those are two that are potentially going to happen. One of the concerns of why this is being brought up is because community members in Yuba Sutter are less likely to hold degrees when compared to California residents. Our community has 17% of the area residents hold a bachelor's degree or higher. Let me say that again. 17% of our service area residents hold a bachelor's degree or higher, as compared to 33% of Californians. So there's a need for a higher level of education for certain jobs, in particular with registered nursing and teaching. Those two particular jobs are going to have voids in the future, and right now, as we know, with COVID, there's a strong need for health care. Other potential trainings that we talked about is fast-tracking and doing some sort of hybrid in-person or virtual design programs with internships. In specific areas where construction, with all the development that possibly is happening in our areas, you know, with those specific trades and services, that was discussed. Agricultural science and manufacturing, there was discussion about COVID specialists and working closer with business entities to understand what that labor market may look like in the years to come. So I look forward to working with Yuba Community College in their future meetings to help strengthen the workforce in our community. And lastly, I want to acknowledge that this month is Black History Month, and I found this great letter that was written 44 years ago, on February 10, 1976, and it was written by former President Ford. And I found his words to be very poignant and time still pretty much holds true. So I'm going to read this quick letter that he wrote in 1976, 44 years ago. "In the bicentennial year of our independence, we can review with admiration the impressive contributions of Black Americans to our national life and culture. 100 years ago, to help highlight these achievements, Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the Association for the Study of Afro-American Life and History. We are grateful to him today for his initiatives, and we are richer for the work of his organization. Freedom and the recognition of individual rights are what our revolution was all about. They were ideals that inspire our fight for independence, ideals that we have been striving to live up to ever since. Yet it took many years before these ideals became a reality for Black citizens. The last quarter century has fully witnessed significant strides in the full integration of Black people into every area of national life. In celebrating Black History Month, we can take satisfaction from these recent progress and the realization of the ideals envisioned by our founding fathers. Ideals envisioned by our founding fathers. But even before then, we can seize the opportunity to honor the often, too often neglected, excuse me, too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of our endeavor throughout our history." He finally says, "I urge my fellow citizens to join me in tribute to the Black History Month and to the message of courage and perseverance it brings to all of us." And these were the words of former 38th president Gerald Ford. And they still hold true today, and we still have work to do, and I appreciate everyone. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yes. Primarily, my meeting consisted of SECOC-related items so far. Did have that meeting, as mentioned before, with Senator Nielsen advocating for the SECOC Green Means Go program, which focuses on assisting on a regional basis areas in their jurisdiction regarding infill, providing infrastructure, and housing opportunities. I will have the, we're basically doing a barometer check and a refresher on that topic with the legislators as we come into this next funding round and for the budget for the state. I'd have the same type of phone call tomorrow morning with Assemblyman Gallagher. I also, as a member of the Land Use and Natural Resources Committee on SECOC, we had our first orientation meeting for new members today, so I'm looking forward to being a part of that discussion as it continues. As a member of Regional Housing Agency, I do have a, I attended the first meeting, was more of an orientation meeting as well, have a, for lack of a better term, a ride-along schedule with Gus later this week, so we're gonna jump in the car, and we're gonna put eyeballs on all the projects they have pending and they're hoping for. School liaison, that meeting doesn't happen until February 11th, the first quarter of this year. Yuba Sutter Transit, the big topic, of course, is the site selection is in progress for their new facility. We, Yuba City is fortunate enough to have one of the three finalist locations within the city, so we're working on advocating for that. Not only, like I had mentioned before in the meeting, we have two different hats, you know, we're on the boards, we have the regional aspect, so we all, we want the project to succeed regardless, but then, of course, we're a little bit biased, I will admit, in that trying to put as much latitude possible on the positive aspects of bringing that facility here to Yuba City. Yuba Sutter Arts, they're very happy, I'm sure they will be, regarding the contribution we made today, they continue to do some very good work, particularly in the wake of COVID or in the midst of COVID. Very busy, a lot of opportunities for more culture, virtually in some cases, distancedly in person. They do a great job. The main thing in progress right now is a donation of the Sutter Theater, and Dave helped me, I'm drawing a blank on the organization. They donated, it's donating the theater. That's it. Thank you. So they're donating Sutter Theater, so we're gonna increase some budget and some staff and more opportunities, and they're gonna, and they also have some worker space for artists in Yuba City over there by the old frame shop, Lee's Canton area, for some local artists to do their work. And then, of course, the theater itself will be a place to display their wares and have some performance. So a bigger footprint on this side of the river, we're excited about that. So many things on the horizon, COVID notwithstanding, but we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, the last two Thursdays and Fridays I attended, I virtually attended training that the city provided through the cities. It was very informative. Looking forward to getting to work with the different committees. The Animal Services Committee, meeting was canceled and postponed until April. One of the committees I am on is the Mosquito Batement, and so I took the opportunity yesterday to go out there and meet with the manager, Steven Amshire, who gave me the nickel tour, and that was very informative, and I look forward to working along with him and the other committees. Our first meeting with the Mosquito Batement will be a week from Thursday, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been a busy couple of weeks. I'll start with the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. I've got the honor of chairing that this next year. As Councilmember Harris said, you know, we've, the big, the big thing right now is a next-generation facility, and we are fortunate enough to have one of the three finalist selections, and they will be coming to us at the next board meeting in February with presenting things, and I want to thank Ms. Langley and Councilmember Harris for setting down, we've already had a good meeting, some good discussions, and they definitely know Yuba City is interested, but we gotta see what the report looks like. So that could be a great booster for us here in our city, because it would move those jobs right across the river, you get the sales tax revenue, all these other added benefits, and it's right on their route. So it's, I think it's a good fit. We'll see where it goes, and I appreciate my fellow council member for helping me think outside of the box, so that's why we're here. The next one's the RWMA. Again, I get the privilege of being the chair of the RWMA. The big idea that's coming from that this year is we will be presented with a new JPA as it reinvents itself because of 1383, and so that's gonna be the big item coming. So probably, I would expect by March or April, we should start seeing the JPAs come before us, because they have to go before all the municipalities to get approved, and they're looking at hopefully bringing it back to the RWMA by midsummer. Also, was on, I'm on GSAC. We had a workshop this past Friday, gleaned a lot of information there, and then to follow that up, I'm also on the Yuba Center Economic Development Corporation, and really getting that nexus of how these two organizations can better serve our community, and I'm looking forward to following up with Mr. Boom with some of the ideas. forward to following up with Mr. Broome with some of the ideas that Councilman Harris you had brought forward when you were on that last year as mayor, and then seeing how we can start bringing some things to Yuba City. VDC is gonna be going through a rebranding. Love the idea of rebranding and telling the story. My only comments to them were make sure that we put some marketing behind it so the world knows exactly what they are doing as well. Let's see. Ms. Langley, you're gonna hear it many times over the next few weeks. I definitely think you have earned the title of master cat herder because you have done an excellent job of herding all the cats that you've had to herd during this time. You've served us well. Thank you to your family for, I know the numerous hours that they have loaned you to us because none of us ever saw COVID coming, none of us saw none of the stuff that we've been hit with coming at us, but you have been professional, a gem, and I just want to extend personal thanks to you and your family because you deserve a ton of accolades, and I'm looking forward to continuing working with you going forward, and I know you want to get back to your normal position, so, but I just want to say thank you. The last two things, Bill Military Liaison. I've started that process. To me, that's been quite refreshing because of veteran in the Air Force that stationed Bill. I like the connection there. And then the arts, I did attend the open house for the theater, and a lot of good things there. I'm looking for the revitalization of that. They were talking about possibly being able to open by April timeframe and start having things down on Pluma Street in the black box. You guys will understand when you go there what the black box is, and you know, it's looking forward on a personal note of, you know, getting in and supporting them how my family and I can, so that's my report for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. First thing, I've got several things here, but first thing is I want to thank the fellow council members. Obviously, you guys are attending a heck of a lot of meetings and bringing a lot of stuff back, so I know you're representing the city well, and you know, it takes a lot of time, and all of you are all in on all that, so all of you, thanks. Also, I think it's important to reach out and thank the city staff for their response during this latest wind event where we saw a lot of things going on, police department, fire department, public works. I hope I'm not missing any that were contributing, but that was a big deal, and there was a lot of stuff going on that night and a lot of great service provided to the citizens, so I really much appreciate that. Things that I've been involved with, another shout, I hate to use the word shout-out, but I just did, department scenarios. I want to thank our department heads. We tasked them with presenting to us ahead of a goal-setting session that we're going to be involved with, with the things that kept them up at night. What are the vital few that we really need to be considering as we move ahead in 2021, 2022? And very professional presentations, you know, it was the needs, not the wants, a lot of needs out there, but it's good to have seen, have some heads up with that, so kudos out to our department heads for their, again, very professional presentations. As far as meetings, as I mentioned earlier, weekly with Dr. Lou, the Public Health Director, to get updates on the latest from public health and the California Department of Public Health. Not always the most encouraging news when you hear about, you know, the dilemma of vaccinations in addition to what former Councilman Cardoso mentioned, just the uncertainty of getting vaccinations for those who want them, and you know, not everybody wants them, but for those that do, not having a sufficient supply and having a rollout has been very problematic. Participated with the vice mayor on some interviews for our commissions, will be continuing to move through that process. As far as meetings, the committees I assigned myself to haven't been as busy as others, but I do, I'll be attending a SECOG meeting with Councilman Harris tomorrow. I will also be with Councilman Harris on a Regional Housing Authority meeting coming up this week. Very pleased to say that we have submitted the city's and the county's master tax exchange agreement for consideration and review by Sutter County. Major step that I hope we get, we get to the goal line very quick, and at the end of this week, we're actually reinstating the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which is two members from the city getting together with two members from Sutter County to just continue to work as closely as possible in the public's best interest. With that, that concludes our meeting. A lot of stuff covered tonight. Again, please know that the city staff is really working hard. We, I mentioned this today, and I know sometimes I take a beating because I want to acknowledge the city staff, but they really are working hard, and they really are providing service in a time when it's very difficult to do so with COVID and other things that come along, so I just, I want to thank them for the work that they do on behalf of the city. So with that, we'll go ahead and close the meeting.